Morning, members. You're all very welcome to the ordinary meeting, our January first meeting of 2021. At the outset, I'm going to call on the Covid officer, Mr. Moore, to outline the procedures. Can I ask, sorry, just everybody, can you mute your mics? And people online as well mute your mics and we'll bring in as requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Cahill. The National Standard Operating Guidance for attendance at council meetings provides that all attendants be informed at the start of the meeting of the Covid-19 control measures in place. So I'd like to draw your attention to a few issues. Each person attending this meeting in person should have completed a Covid declaration form before entering the room. These forms will serve as a record of attendance for contact tracing purposes if required. This meeting room has been prepared in accordance with the standard operating guidance. Face coverings must be worn by all attendees when entering and leaving the room. There should be no congregating in the building before or after the meeting. A one-way system is in place for entering and exiting the room. In compliance with the operating guidelines, the meeting time will not exceed one hour and 55 minutes. Attendees must adhere at all times to the two-meter physical distancing and follow the public health advice in relation to hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. A response plan is in place in the event that an attendee at the meeting feels unwell. An isolation room has been provided. If anyone feels unwell during the meeting, they should alert myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Now, we have a reasonably long agenda, so with your cooperation, we have one presentation as well, but with your cooperation, if we can limit speaking time to just the main points of the item. So item number one, to note the minutes of the Ballymore Tubac Hurry Municipal District Meeting held on the 19th of October. Proposed, Consular Clerk, second, Consular Queenan. Item number two, to confirm minutes of the ordinary meeting, Consular Clerk, second, Consular Connolly. Item number three, to consider under section 183 of the Local Government Act 2001, the disposal of the council land to the rear gardens properties Crammore and Crammore Villa Sligo as set out in Schedule 1A of the North of Disposable Lands Held by. Sorry, who proposed that one? Consular Bree and Consular O'Callaghan. My apologies, members, just had a separate sheet of paper here on behalf, my own behalf, as Cahill, on behalf of the management and staff and all the fellow councillors, I want to convey sympathies of the council to the family of former county manager Paul Byrne, who passed away last week. So may he rest in peace. Consular Bree.
I wish to second your proposal that this council would extend its sympathy to the family of the late Paul Byrne. Paul Byrne's close association with this local authority started in 1949, when as a teenager he took up his first position as an employee of Sligo County Council. And that was the beginning of a long and successful career in local government. From those early days until he retired in 1993, he spent his time serving the public in local government and in the regional health board. I was a member of Sligo Corporation and Sligo County Council when Paul Byrne was appointed to county manager back in 1977. And I certainly can give testament to his integrity, his dedication, and his sense of service to this council and to the people of this community. Paul Byrne had a particular affinity with Sligo Corporation and Sligo Borough. And given his interest in the arts, he played a significant role in the founding of Sligo's first theatre, the Hawswell Theatre. He also played an important role in developing and supporting Sligo's first twinning with Crozan and Brittany. During his 15 years of dedicated service as Sligo County Manager, he successfully managed the finances of this council during a period when money was very scarce. And he was central to the delivery of numerous physical and social infrastructure projects. He was at the forefront of everything to do with Sligo and promoting Sligo. He will be remembered for his contribution to the economic and social development of both the town and county. Thank you, Cahill.
Thanks, Consular B, CE.
Cahill, thank you. Just on behalf of the staff, I'd like to also sympathize with the Byrne family and the debt of Paul. I didn't have the privilege of working with Paul, but I certainly know over the last week or so, talking to some of my colleagues who did, he was a dedicated public servant, as Consular Bree has said. And apart from that, that he was an absolute gentleman, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you. Moving on, so to item number four.
Can I propose it, please?
Consular Gilroy, second, Consular Sinead Maguire.
Sorry, can I just say something on that particular development? It's only nine months since the last people actually moved into that development. And I want to compliment Mark Commons and the team down in the town hall and the contractor for having it in such a state that it can move on so quickly. And I think it's a template that should be used across all developments, trying to get them so quickly to the stage that we're not dragging out here years later, trying to put things right. So congratulations to all involved.
Motion number five, Consular Clerk, second, Consular Queenan. Now, moving on to item number six, and I want to welcome, we have a presentation on Flafest 2021. I want to welcome our former colleague Bartley Gavin and Mihal O'Donnell, who join us online. And again, due to the Covid restrictions, if you could please, Bartley and Mihal, we'll have to restrict you to 10 minutes, so we let you away. Good morning.
Good morning. Cahill, members, and Chief Executive Tom McFeather and staff. Now, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the council on Flafest. And we're very conscious of your time, and we're conscious that your meeting is limited, so we will be brief. So Flafest is a culture and music event, and it'll take place in Sligo in August of this year. Now, because of the pandemic, cultists made a decision to cancel all Flannic Ull this year, county flowers, provincial flowers, and Flachionne Hare. The first county flowers, Sligo's county flowers in June, but the first county flowers kick off in April, which results that the competition entry process starts in February. And as we all know, at this stage, it wouldn't be possible to start the process that would lead to flowers at this time. So the Flaf process in 2021 will be replaced by Flafest. So Flafest will have a county element, a provincial element, overseas elements, and it will culminate with a national Flafest in Sligo in August 21. Flafest will focus on our culture, particularly on music, song, dance, and the Irish language. It will be community-driven, led out by the various cultist units. Now, my colleague, Mihal O'Donnell, will outline in broad terms the attention for Flafest and the positives it holds for Sligo. At a time when towns and counties right across Ireland are looking for ways to engage with visitors, Flafest will provide Sligo with opportunities, business, tourism, and culture to promote our county. So our aim is to partner with the council to achieve the maximum benefit for our county by building on the relationships which delivered the flowers in 2014, 2015. Now, we'd be happy to have all of your input and to address any questions you have. So with that now, I'll ask Mihal to come in.
Thank you, Bartley, and good morning, everybody, and thank you all for your time here today. Well, as you know, Flachionne Hare is Ireland's greatest traditional Irish music export. Every year, hundreds of thousands of people descend in the host town for a musical extravaganza, which is the best thing that we can do in terms of beaming our culture, our music around the world on television, radio, through print, social media, and online. Of course, we experienced this ourselves most recently in Sligo in 2014 and again in 2015. We hosted Flachionne Hare in twice, festivals which are still held as the standard that other host towns since then have striven to achieve. Now, unfortunately, as Bartley has mentioned, Flachionne Hare won't take place this year for the reasons mentioned. But unlike last year, when the Flann was also cancelled, with cultists making no amendments or alterations, this year the Arcola of Cultists decided that an alternative would have to be found to sustain traditional Irish music followers around the world who ordinarily would have supported the Flann. And so Flafest came into being. So cultists approached several towns which were invited to express an interest in hosting Flafest. And when that competition was concluded, Sligo had the honour of being selected, no doubt based partly on our experience of hosting successful Flanna in 2014 and 2015, as well as the strong record of support from Sligo County Council, the cooperation of IT Sligo, and the unique community spirit continuously evidenced throughout the Flanna here in Sligo. So this, August the 1st to the 9th, as you can see, the Flafest will take place here in Sligo. The first hurdle was to become host town. The second here today is to garner your support. And in partnership with Sligo County Council, Flafest has the potential to become Ireland's most innovative and culturally important festival this year. So our plans at this stage are very tentative. The decision to award Flafest to Sligo was only taken in December, so it's really only now that we're starting to get the details together. So what we do know is that we plan a mixture of the virtual and actual events for our programme. The festival plan will include a number of streams, which will enable us to weigh more heavily towards the virtual programme, should Covid restrictions remain in place, or towards the more traditional approach of hosting well-managed, actual competitions, concerts, street entertainment, and events which will have limited participants and audience numbers. And that's only should the situation improve and pandemic protocols allow. Now, of course, by the summer, we would also hope that a vaccine programme will be in place and will have been administered to enough of the population to enable Flafest to at least be an actual traditional festival, where musicians and their families can come and play music in concerts, sessions, and competitions. And let's hope by then that businesses will also be operational once more, pubs, restaurants, and hotels opening up. Should that scenario come to pass, then the opportunity will also be there to provide more cultural events in a safe and family-friendly environment. In the scenario where restrictions have been eased, outdoor concerts could also take place in venues across Sligo, street entertainment and an outdoor gig could be provided. And after so many months of disappointments, frustrations, cancellations, and lockdown, imagine the excitement that these kinds of events would generate once again. Of course, all of that is predicated on the delivery of a vaccine programme which will allow for indoor and outdoor events to take place. In the months ahead, with your support, we will draw up a plan which will have public safety to the fore, but one which can be amended to allow for more interactive public events upon advice from the health authorities. If Flafest were to include at least some events where the participation of the public was allowed, there is no way that these events could successfully take place without the cooperation of Sligo County Council and other local agencies. As referred to earlier, Sligo County Council's support and the former Borough Council's support, as well as the council's direct involvement in the Flanna five and six years ago, was central to the success of the two events. The community sector was also incredible. There wasn't a day that the input of hundreds of volunteers wasn't commented on and complimented. Without being able to draw on these kinds of resources again, Flafest won't work. And while this festival will be different to Flachionne Hare, it puts Sligo as a whole to work. So let's look, before I conclude, at the alternative. What about if pandemic restrictions remain? What kind of Flafest will we have then? Well, much of the programme will simply move online. Concerts, performances, lectures, live and pre-recorded, will be streamed on the Flachionne social media channels. Other Flann mainstays like competitions, scolacha, the bardic awards, and other events will also be streamed. Facebook Live sessions with Sligo musicians can be organised and played throughout the day, a nine-day festival, let's remember. TG Carrer have committed to doing four nights of two-hour concerts each of those nights already, so that's eight hours of concerts in total, and they've also planned to stream some of the competitions. RTE have always been supportive of Flachionne Hare, and we're confident that they will row in behind this particular festival when they see the efforts being made locally to produce a festival of not only national but international importance. At some point, the tide will turn, and Covid-19 will no longer dominate every news headline. Hopefully, that will start this summer. Imagine running a festival, online or otherwise, where we have an editorial input which will enable us to promote Sligo, our tourism, and our cultural product, where hotels, pubs, restaurants, and other businesses involved in the tourism sector can pitch for business in 2022, or, should restrictions allow, could benefit directly this summer. And imagine what it could do for community spirit. What a way to lift Sligo after all we've been through. We've done it before, and we can do it again. The community and Sligo County Council, working together. Thank you very much for listening this morning.
Thank you very much, Mihal, and thank you very much, Bartley. And I know I speak on behalf of all the members, who are only too delighted to support this, and hopefully that this will be a great success, and we all look forward. When Covid is behind us, that we will be welcoming the large crowds back to Sligo in the near future. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you keeping to the time restraints on that. Consular Maguire.
Thank you. I'll be brief, just to express my support. I think we're incredibly lucky in Sligo to have Bartley and Mihal and the rest of your team leading out on this. No doubt that if it flows anyway like our Flann and the past couple of years, it'll be a tremendous success. And as you've outlined, Mihal, a very welcome respite from what we've been going through over the last year and a half. So I wish you all the very best with the preparations and assure you of my support if there's anything that I can do to assist.
Thank you, Consular Maguire. Consular Rosalyn O'Grady. Continue to turn on your mic, Rosalyn, please.
Thank you, Cahill. And it's good to see Bartley virtually back in the chamber and Mihal, because before I start, and I will be very brief, there's not a councillor around this table, or around the table, or virtually, that isn't indebted to the support that Bartley has given all of us over the many years. So now the tables have turned, and I certainly want to fully endorse my support for the Flafest, to thank and acknowledge Bartley, Mihal, Peter, and the full team for applying for this and delivering it. What a positive note on a Monday morning during pandemic, that we will have a fabulous community experience, either virtually or on-street music and competition. Though I think we have seen what has happened before in 14 and 15, when Sligo County Council played a huge part in partnering cultists. So I think it goes without saying that Sligo County Council and certainly I as a member would be fully behind promoting Sligo. This is a huge tourism promotion of our tourism, of our culture. And just imagine getting four nights of a two-hour programme, how Sligo will be able to be promoted during that time. We couldn't buy that kind of promotion. So again, I want to thank you, Bartley and Mihal and the team for the work done, and know that Sligo County Council will give you our full-hearted support. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular O'Grady. Consular Kessery. Can you turn on your mic, Marie, please? Speak, Marie, can we can't hear you?
Yeah, is that okay now?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks very much. I'll be brief as well. Just want to say well done to Mihal and Bartley and Peter and all the crew again for giving us something to look forward to, particularly in these times. It's going to be such a brilliant shot in the arm for the county and also for the region as well, and it's something for musicians. They have something to look forward to and to plan for now. Bartley, it's great to see you back. You didn't stay retired for too long. And it's just when this was advertised and when it was shared locally, it was a hugely positive response to this. So again, people are just looking forward to something alternative to the doom and gloom, and hopefully, once the vaccination is found and that society starts to open up again, that this will be one of the flagship events, not only for Sligo but for the entire country. So well done, everyone.
Thanks, Consular Kessery. Consular O'Callaghan.
Thank you, Chair, just to show my support for the Flafest and Bartley as well for our help over the years. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Thanks. Yeah, I think with all the members in the chamber and all the members virtually would like to be associated. Miss McFeather.
Cahill, I'd just like to thank Bartley, Mihal, and I know Peter is there as well for the presentation this morning, and it was done professionally and within the time. It's very clear that the council are fully behind this, and I think Mihal has outlined the potential for this to give a huge lift to Sligo coming out of this pandemic. And the executive and will work with the Fred Frin branch and work with the members to see over the next number of weeks that what's required to support and to deliver on this. And we're obviously all on the same page here, and we'll make sure it's a success in line with what the flowers were in 2014, 15. Thank you, Cahill.
Thanks, Miss McFeather. And on behalf of all the members here, we wish you well, Bartley, Mihal, Peter, and all the crew that are involved in it, and the very best of good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors.
Okay, moving on, so item number seven, to endorse sick ban framework documents, Sligo County Council, Consular Clerk, and second by Consular Connolly. Thank you. Item number eight, to note the outcome of the public consultation on the proposed Sligo bids, business improvement district bids to succeed the current Sligo bid and arrange for holding a plebiscite report to follow. Consular Walsh indicated. No, okay. Can we note that so? Okay. Yeah, Consular Rosalyn O'Grady. Consular O'Grady, can I bring you in first?
Okay. Thank you, Cahill. I just want to say how important that we note this. And I think it's important that we reflect on what bid has brought to Sligo since its foundation. You know, there has been support for so many aspects of business, both commercial tourism and all aspects, and support for local festivals. And the purple flag has been maintained during the time of the bid since its inception. So I would like to acknowledge, I know that Consular Gibbons is working very hard, working very earnestly with that group, but I would like to acknowledge and thank Gail McGibbin and all involved in the board there for the work done. And I think it's important that we as a council realise the value of bid and that we continue to support them. And I also, I don't want to admit John there for the work that he has done in supporting the whole operation of bid and its ongoing development. And I just at this point would acknowledge that the Christmas lights that in many towns have been turned off and in many towns have been left, that Sligo bid are leaving on some of the lights and are covering the cost of that during this pandemic times to bring a bit of hope and light to all the people who use our city centre. So thank you, Consular.
Thanks, Consular O'Grady. I'll bring in first of all, John Riley.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, the report has been circulated. There's just one, one of the decision items on the report there is to nominate a member or members to attend the opening of the ballot box. If that could be done. I understand that Consular Gibbons is interested in being there. I'd suggest that more than one member be available in case of unavailability for whatever reason on the day. We're proposing, as the report has outlined, to go ahead with the vote probably in early February, with a period of two weeks before, to allow businesses time to cast their votes. Thank you.
Thanks, Consular. I think we've proposed from Consular Bree.
Cahill, I wish to thank Mr. Riley for his presentation, for the documentation. There are two decisions I note that are being sought. One, that we hold a plebiscite to determine the level of support for the proposed business improvement district. And I would be proposing that we do so, that we hold a plebiscite. And secondly, we're asked to nominate a member or members to attend the opening of the ballot box. And given that Consular Gibbons is a member of the company, I would propose Consular Gibbons. And I would also propose you, Chair, I think it's in keeping with tradition that the Cahill of the council, along with the member from bid, would be nominated, if that's acceptable. I formally propose.
I second that.
Second vote, Consular Millenya. Thank you.
Cahill, I did my hand up.
Consular Walsh, yeah? Sorry, Consular Walsh.
Yeah, just I echo what Consular O'Grady has said. I think there'd be a huge vacuum in the county if a new bid wasn't supported. And I think one figure which we should try to get out there, the number, there has been a 20% increase in coach traffic in 2019 since the work bid has done. Two things I think that businesses, we need to get out there, is that when business pays in to bid, they're supporting the St Patrick's Day Parade, they're supporting Sligo Summer Festival, and they're supporting Sligo Tidy Towns. And over 100,000 has been given to Sligo bid from Sligo Tidy Town since 2016. So I think that if this bid isn't renewed, I think there's going to be a huge vacuum left in Sligo Town. So I would urge as many businesses to support this, and hopefully, a new bid will be returned. Because I don't think there is any other body that will fill this space. So it's vital that a new bid is supported by Sligo County Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Kessery.
Yeah, just very briefly, I just want to add my support that for the parades, the Christmas lights, coach parking, purple flags, supporting so many projects, I think that maybe a lot of people mightn't see a lot of community and voluntary projects that have been happening over the years. Sligo bid have given money to those for sponsorship as well. So I think I'd just like to acknowledge the work that Gail and John and the team have done. And as Consular Walsh has says, I can't see anybody else being able, I suppose physically or financially, to step into that gap. So I think that Sligo bid need to be supported, I suppose, as much as possible, because what we get back from them, I don't think we'd be able to, under one organisation, I don't think it would be possible for everything to be done. So I fully support Sligo bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on, so to item number nine, to note the monthly management report for October. Noted. Deferred motions, item number 10, Consular O'Grady. Now, the replies have been sent out, have been informed, so if we can keep the motions short, thank you.
Yeah, just to say, Cahill, that I was unable to open the reply. So that's an issue, but look, I don't want to delay time either.
Miss McFeather will give you a quick outline of the report.
Cahill, it's understood that 12 bike stands will be provided in the Stephen Street Car Park Plaza project, and there will also be provision made in future public renovation works for bike stands, for example, the Stephen Street Car Park. The O'Connaughn Street project team is currently considering suitable stands for bike, suitable stands for bike stands as part of the O'Connaughn Street upgrade works. It should be noted that there are currently numerous bike stands at strategic locations in Sligo Town, for example, in the car parks. However, the Roads Department is happy to consider any other suitable locations around the town for the installation of more bike stands in 2021. Thank you, Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. McFeather, and that's all very heartening to know that that's on the agenda. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And Consular Maguire has seconded that motion. Motion number 12, Consular O'Grady, or 11, sorry, Consular O'Grady again. Can I get a second, please? Consular Maguire. Thank you.
Yeah, I wonder, Cahill, could I defer that? Because it's work in progress at the moment, and could I defer it until next month, just to see what the outcome is?
Okay, thank you. Move on, so to motion number 12, Consular Queenan, second, Consular Clerk.
I got my reply. It's a one-liner. I want to wish Imar ever success in her new role. She's following in the footsteps of her father, who was also director of services for infrastructure. So she's making history. Imar, just to say that the national primaries get a fair amount of money in the county, but the regional road, that regional road from Drummer West along the senior route to Mayo border gets very little, has got very little funding in recent times, the last 10 years. And there are a lot of, Consular Clerk will verify, a lot of bins, sightline problems, there are flooding problems on that road, and it could do, I know there's some surface work done, improved the surface in places, but it could do with extra funding, the low-cost action schemes and all that seems to be gone. So I would hope, I see you're going to apply for money, and that's welcome.
Thanks, Consular Clerk. You seconded that. Do you want to come in? No, Consular Taylor.
Just to support Consular Queenan's motion, and just to...
Just to support councillor Queen's motion, and just to support what he has said as well. And just to agree, I know he's issue over his side with the R297, but I do agree that the regional roads need serious upgrading in the county. And I support his call for more money for regional roads. And, you know, we've had many motions in the past about the R293 and the R294. And I know, I know, Emir, you'll be, you'll be well aware, and I wish you well in your new role as well. And I know you'd be well aware of all these issues that we're facing with the regional roads and all roads. But, you know, it's becoming a problem. And, look, we, hopefully, things will improve in the future.
Thank you. Motion number 13, councillor Queen. And again, can I get a second councillor?
Yeah, once again, welcome, wish John every success in his new role. I got the reply. I do welcome the houses that's been going to be allocated in Drum West Village in sometime for the end of the year, and I see a house also in Tavakari. But there are very little indications that anything else is happening in the whole East Key, Ratley, in the Swoon area. And there's this huge demand now in Swoon. It's a growing villages. And we haven't made any, in my opinion, any, no indication that there are any construction of houses going to take place in the future. It's at least 15 years since houses was built in Swoon by social housing. And there is a big demand. And I know all councillors, every day, are getting calls about looking for accommodation. And I would urge you, Mr. Moran, in your new role, to see prioritising Swoon to purchase a piece of land in that area, if at all possible. And so I am moving on over the next number of years.
Thank you, councillor Clerk.
Mr. Here, I also would like to wish John Moran well in his new role. And so support councillor Queen in relation to Innes Swoon in particular, and East Key. In Swoon, there are a number of sites in Innes Swoon that are held by private developers. And there could be an option there for some of the housing agencies to go in and build 30 or 40 houses on that site. And there's a number of sites in it. And I think that, given the fact that the council own no land in Innes Swoon, that this is the only option left to us to engage with some of those developers that has those properties there that have planning mission in place, and that are not proceeding with the developments. And my understanding is a number of them would be anxious to go into some sort of an arrangement with a housing agency to build the houses. So I support the motion. But we're at a critical situation in Innes Swoon in relation to housing. I'm sure there's over 200 people looking for houses in Innes Swoon. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Cahill. Look, the, just the current social housing targets are for the period of 2017 up to the end of the current year. So we, as I mentioned in the report, we will be looking at the demand right across the county. And we certainly will be looking at the Innes Swoon situation. And we will be looking at some of the lands that have been referred to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. We're moving on. So to the main motions, motion 14. Now, this is linked with motion, well, similar to motion 28, with your agreement. Can we take two together? Councillor Casserly?
Thank you. I'm requesting that Sligo County Council write to the Minister for Justice and Finance and Public Expenditure to make provisions where drug and drug trafficking and money is confiscated under the proceeds of crime legislation be redirected from central coffers back into local addiction services, youth organisations, et cetera. And that the necessary legislation is changed as a matter of urgency to allow this vital funding support to happen. And briefly, I'll just give you a rundown of the organisations locally that could benefit from this funding could be Sligo Social Services. They run an open access service where you can pop in and chat about family members owing money to drug dealers, money lenders. And they make referrals. And they help people with food and food vouchers. And they provide a drug and alcohol counsellor. The crib is a safe alcohol and a safe alcohol and drug free place for young people aged 12 to 18 years to be themselves, meet their friends, and their support provided for them there. The drugs task force, the aim of this service is to provide drug and alcohol supports to families and children affected by a family member and/or a friend's substance misuse. The Northside Community Centre, which is a drop in service, the HSE, Yaps and Rockwood Parade, the youth action project Sligo, it's a guard, the youth diversion project. It works with 12 to 18 year olds who are involved in criminal or antisocial behaviour, or who are at risk of becoming involved in this. The Family Resource Centre, they provide support for individuals, families and communities. Faroiga and the Cranmore Community Cooperative Society Limited, they provide a public space for a public health clinic once a week, a counselling service in the therapy room, and outreach service for those experiencing difficulties with substance abuse and their families. And I know that all these organisations could directly benefit from this, from this money and this funding. So I'm asking for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Cahill. Look, I worked for seven years with drug addicts and saw firsthand the manner in which drugs destroy families and extended families and indeed communities. Rehab that is provided to them is limited, unfortunately, due to resources. And the supports that Marie has outlined that are available here are absolutely vital to those who are desperately trying to get themselves out of that addiction. Just in the last two months alone in Sligo, almost 500,000 euros has been seized by Gardi. And that funding would provide incredible support to the agencies that Marie has outlined and the others that are available. I believe it would be poetic justice that the blood money earned through the drug trade would be returned to fight the plague of drugs in our communities, which rots them at their core. And it would be a fantastic resource to the people who at the coalface really battle with this on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. That motion is agreed? Agreed, thank you. Okay, moving on. So to our next motion is motion number 15, councillor Casserly. And I have a request from councillor Casserly to amend that motion. Can I read out the amendment with the agreement of the members? Following on from the September meeting with Inghardishy O'Conna, CEO Joseph Nugent and the council delegation, I'm requesting that this council write to Justice Minister Helen McAttee, Chief Commissioner Harris and Mr. Nugent requesting a full report providing answers to the questions that were asked, and to ask if the OPW has developed plans to date, and has there been any costed following on from the letter received. Is that agreed? Agreed. Councillor Casserly, can I get a second there? Councillor Fox?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. No, I'll be very brief because we've gone through all this already. I just, I amended it because there was a letter back from, from CEO Joseph Nugent, but it didn't provide enough information. And we did have a list at that meeting of all the, we had a lot of questions that needed to be answered, and we still haven't got those answers. So now, what I'm asking for is for the OPW to provide costed plans that we haven't seen, that aren't available for the renovation of Sligo Gardi Station. So I'm looking for your support on that, please. Just that we need more information on that. We haven't had answers to hardly any of the questions that were, that were posed on the day of that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Seconded. Do you want to comment or disagree with it? Yeah. Councillor O'Grady, is your hand up? Is councillor O'Grady, you with us? No, I'll move on to councillor Galroy.
Thanks for that, Cahill. Look, just that meeting that was held, we didn't receive anything from yourself or the other members as to what was done at that. The deputation was to represent us all. And I think maybe we should get a report from those who attended to the other members so that we're fully kept up to speed on it as well. Because if delegations, if everybody has to go on delegations, then it's going to be very unworkable. So it'd be nice to get a report back on the meeting, possibly from yourself, Cahill. Look, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Galroy. Councillor O'Grady? Oh, no. Yeah, no, it's gone again. No, just, I suppose, maybe as councillor Casserly has indicated, like at the meeting, there was a cross party delegation. And I suppose the questions were put to Mr. Nugent. And, you know, we were hoping to get answers on the questions that were submitted to him. And when they didn't come back, you know, that's, I suppose, why we're still waiting as to, so we'll see if some of the members that had questions, if they, if they still have them, if they can be furnished to the members. But the questions were put to Mr. Nugent on the day we requested. And I know it took some considerable time. I was disappointed it took so long to get a report, a reply back. But I think all the members were furnished with the reply that Mr. Nugent had. So councillor Baker?
Just a point I want to make, and you know yourself, Cahill, look, with the way the barracks is in Sligo, all the pressure is coming on out in Ballymoo. And they're getting to a stage that they'll be getting it hard to cope. But I think there seem to be happy when there is an outlet for people to go that they're not dragging their heels a bit. So I think we all need to put on pressure. Thank you.
You. That motion is agreed. So the next motion is motion number 16. And, yeah, well, just on that motion, councillor Casserly has indicated that she wishes to amend that motion with the agreement of the members. Can I read out the amendment? That this council call on the government to commence planning for a change in the nature set out of our relationship with Northern Ireland, with particular reference to the major impact of Brexit and Covid on politics, economy, society, sport and culture on this island and on our community in Sligo and surrounding counties. We accordingly seek a timeline for preparation and plans for continued integration of services in accordance with the new shared island initiative. Is that agreed?
Totally different motion. This motion is about having a border poll. Has councillor Casserly changed her politics overnight or over the weekend since that motion went in?
Councillor.
This is seeking a timeline and preparation and plans for a border poll. And certainly I could be supportive.
I'm just amending it slightly.
It's not.
You're not amending it, you're changing it.
That's a different motion.
No, no, I'm just, I'm removing the border poll part. I'm looking for a timeline. There's very little change in it. If you read it again.
Yes, you're looking for it.
I read the first motion. Well, members, you see the motion that's in front. You can all read that. The motion that this council calls on the government to commence planning for a change in the nature of our relationship with Northern Ireland, with particular reference to the major impact of Brexit and Covid on politics, economy, society, sports and culture on this island and on our community in Sligo and surrounding counties. We accordingly seek a timeline for preparation and plans for continued integration of services in accordance with the new shared island initiative.
We're not talking about an integration of services. This is very clear. It's black and white. We're seeking a timeline for preparation and plans for a border poll. That's.
But I want to amend it now. Is that allowed?
One at a time, please. Councillor Casserly has called him for an amendment. Councillor, bring you to the floor.
Cahill, I would suggest, I would say that it's totally out of order because it's a different motion. And if councillor Casserly wishes to put in a different motion in regard to the integration of services, she has the right to do so. But it shouldn't be at this meeting. It should come in as a separate motion if she is going withdrawing this motion in relation to the border poll. Because I certainly support the border poll. And I would, and I would like to vote in favour of that motion, motion number 16, which councillor Casserly has submitted. But what she is now proposing is an entirely different motion talking about integration of services.
Councillor, all right, one sec, councillor Casserly?
Sorry, Joe, I didn't hear what you said.
Put on the mic.
Councillor Casserly, I suggest you go ahead with the motion as it is in front of us here. It's a fine motion. I support it.
Councillor Maguire?
Councillor Casserly, if you wish to, go ahead with your amended motion. I'm happy to second the amended motion.
Well, I would prefer at this stage, go ahead with the amended motion.
Right, well, we have to have full agreement on that. So councillor O'Grady.
In order to amend a motion, according to standard orders, in order to amend a motion, the motion must be proposed and seconded on the floor. So motion 16 hasn't even been proposed. It has been seconded. Has motion 16 been proposed?
Yeah, is motion number 16, are you proposing it as originally? Or are you withdrawing it?
Councillor Casserly then can propose an amendment if the motion is proposed and seconded. But until such time as it's proposed and seconded, it can't be amended.
Right. Councillor Casserly, you proposing the original motion 16? We have a second there here.
Um, not the original.
I'm not prepared to.
Have we a second for your motion as?
Well, yes, Mr. Gibbons has indicated.
Right, okay. Councillor Casserly?
Um, no, I wanted to have the amended motion on the agenda.
No, but you have to take the original one first. You have a proposer yourself and seconded by councillor Arthur Gibbons. Do you want to proceed with that motion?
No.
No, okay, that motion is withdrawn. So, so we move ahead. You can bring in the amended motion. It falls. Yeah, yeah, no, but you can bring that one in again.
If that's withdrawn, I have to say, I'm very disappointed that councillor Casserly has withdrawn that motion. It's a very important motion. But I'll come in with a similar motion at the next meeting to allow members to support it.
Okay, thank you.
It is a very important motion, but I think the timing isn't right now. And that's why I.
Well, it was clearly all right last week, the timing.
Can we proceed ahead so with agreement with the members? So, motion number 17, councillor Clerk. Councillor Queen, and second.
Cahill, look. This motion that councillor Casserly has withdrawn, right? Chris McMahon has already had this motion down previously on this council. And at least he had the backbone to stand behind it. Actually, the wording for the motion at the time, this was on the 10th of April 2017, the Sligo County Council calls on the government to establish and rock this all party group to bring forward a green paper on unity. Members asked that in order to clarify what the green paper would refer to, it was suggested that there were 32 counties will be added to the motion. Everybody agreed. That was in 2000. And it's lovely to see that that motion had gone down and successfully went through in 2017. But the person that put it down had a backbone to see it through.
We're dealing with councillor Clerk's motion here now, and seconded by councillor Queen.
Chairman, I, there's an associated motion that I support as well, Arthur Gibbons has been in, and it's all about housing. And I totally agree with it as well. But on this motion here, back in 2011, when those figures were established, a gardener or a teacher or a nurse or frontline staff would, workers would be able to get a mortgage to buy a house back in 2011. Now, they're referred to as the squeezed middle that can't establish a mortgage, because it takes over 60,000 of an income to get a mortgage on a standard house at the moment. For example, the average industrial wage can't establish a mortgage because it's only at 37,000. So the councillor Gibbons motion and this motion is very similar because this problem with the squeezed middle, they have to rent accommodation. They can't get on the mortgage. They get no assistance with rent money like HAP. And it's all an issue that has to be looked at by the department especially. I mean, 200,000 for a standard house, 60,000 of an income, and the property prices has risen substantially since 2016. So I'd urge the council to support the motion and to give fair play to these people that are 36,000 and 37,000 of an income, can't get a mortgage, have to rent at high rents and get no support. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Queen. I'd like to support councillor Clerk's motion. He's right, he tends to pick the people in squeezed middle who cannot even get on the council housing waiting list. And this is the key to this, you know, you have to wage max of 25,000 or 30,000 for a family. That's far, far too low. So there's a whole lot of people out here who can't, who are not on the county council waiting list and can't get on it. So the figures we have here in Sligo, 1,000 people, is wrong. You could double that. And that's the first thing. And when I can recall, Dara O'Brien in opposition raised this himself. Now he has the feet under the table. And it's up to him to deal with this. And I hope he deals with it soon. So far, I'm not over impressed by his performance. But we'll give him, we'll give him another year, we'll see. But it is, and I agree with the motion. Thank you, councillor Boyle. Thank you councillor Boyle.
Yeah, just to support the motion, Chair, thank you.
Okay, is that motion agreed?
Agreed.
Motion number eighteen, councillor Bray, can I get a seconder? Councillor Boyle?
Cahill, look, the main reason for the installation of community CCTV is to assist in the prevention of antisocial behaviour, illegal dumping and crime prevention, indeed, councillors are regularly approached by residence groups requesting the provision of CCTV in particular areas where there's antisocial behaviour, however, unless CCTV is used proportionately, it can give rise to legitimate concerns of unreasonable and unlawful intrusion into the data protection and the privacy rights of individuals, in this context, this council's community CCTV system must comply with data protection legislation. The council's CCTV data protection policy is a public document available online, which indicates that data obtained through the use of the CCTV system shall be limited and proportionate to the purposes for which it was obtained, and will not be used by the council for any other purposes other than those outlined in the policy document, and to my knowledge, there have been no complaints from members of the public in regard to the council's data protection policy. The Data Protection Commission carried out audits on CCTV usage by all councils in the country in 2019 and 2020, and I'm therefore seeking an update on the council's system, and that comes actually proposed a motion. I wish to thank the Director of Service, Mr Moore, for the response, and I note that the Data Protection Commissioner has been in communication with the council, and that we're still awaiting his final directive, we might be advised of that directive when it is received, please.
Thank you. Mr Moore?
Yes, of course, when we get feedback on the outcome of that, we will certainly advise members of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, motion number nineteen, councillor Bray.
Cahill, I have to say that I'm disappointed that Onboard Plonalla has still not made a decision confirming the compulsory purchase order for this new link road, residents living in the St Bridges Place area are at a loss to understand the ongoing delay in developing the Burton Street link road on the proposed, or the proposed T2312 road, which will link the junction of Milcote Road Connolly Street with the junction of Burton Street Pierce Road, and reduce vehicular traffic through Lower St Bridges Place, this new road link will allow vehicles from Temple Street and Milcote Road to directly access the Pierce Road and vice versa, it has been an objective of the development plan for almost two decades, indeed, when I looked at my file last week, I found the response issued to me dated the 21st of January 2011, from the then Director of Services, indicating that the council was proposing to pursue the compulsory purchase order in 2011, so as to enable the completion of the road link, however, it took until March of 2020 to publish the compulsory purchase order for this small area of land, and now we must await a decision from Onboard Plonalla, hopefully 2020 will see the compulsory purchase order confirmed, I welcome the report from the Director, thank you Cahill.
Cahill, just to confirm, there was one submission to the board, that has been withdrawn now, so we'd be very hopeful that Onboard Plonalla would confirm the CPO sooner rather than later, to allow us to progress.
Certainly welcome that news, and I think many of the motorists and the drivers, and especially the residents of Lower St Bridges, will welcome that, and hopefully we will see the compulsory purchase order confirmed, thank you Cahill.
Thank you councillor Boyle, just to support the motion, thank you, motion number twenty, councillor Bray, councillor Boyle?
Cahill, look, the people of this community and electorate representatives are anxious to see Sligo Port maintained as a vibrant commercial harbour serving Sligo and the surrounding region, and we obviously want to see the best possible use of the existing substantial harbour facilities at the port, which were provided largely by public funds, I welcome the decision to have a seabed survey of the harbour carried out this year, so as to ascertain the volume of seabed material which will need to be removed, so as to maintain and improve the level of ship tonnage entering the port, when this council took responsibility for the harbour and port, we received a report from the council management stating clearly that they considered that the operation of the port in terms of shipping and property management was economically viable, and the report went on to state that the council was satisfied that it could secure the development of the harbour in terms of shipping and as a driver of the economic development of the region, in the recently published spatial and economic strategy for the region, it states that while the significance of Sligo Port in national terms may be low, it still remains important in the regional and local economy, supporting local industry and providing an important export-import transportation facility, the strategy contains an objective to support, enhance and enable investment in the development and diversification of the harbour, and it's also an objective in our town development, in our own development plan, to retain the port as a viable infrastructure and commercial entity, supported by port-related industries and business activities, so in this context, Cahill, look, I welcome the report, I'm pleased that there will be a seabed survey carried out, and hopefully we might be provided with a report on that survey when it's completed, thank you Cahill.
Thank you, councillor Boyle, a second, yeah, that's okay, I'll help you to the board, okay, moving on to item, motion number twenty-one, councillor Millany, seconded by councillor Baker.
Yeah, Cahill, look, I got the report, I suppose I have to say that I'm disappointed with the reply, which states that there's not enough of pedestrians crossing the Art Way at Four in Givernham to justify a pedestrian crossing, in light of the fact that there's over twenty-five new houses built on the Highwood Road, all of which, the people that live in, all of which has to cross, and particularly the children going to the National School, the National School and the creche and the chapel and the health centre are all, have to be accessed by crossing the Art Way at Four, now, the infrastructure in Givernham hasn't changed in the last thirty years, despite the fact that there's twenty-five new houses built there, so I think it's important that due consideration is given to putting pedestrian crossing across the Art Way at Four.
Yeah, can I just ask the member, any of the members that are zooming in to mute their microphone, please, there's some noise coming in, thank you, councillor Baker?
Yeah, I'd just like to support councillor Millany on the motion, because as well as schools and that, the community field has been used on the playground, and it is a very dangerous stretch of road, I know there has been improvements done in the past, but definitely a crossing is needed there, thank you.
Thank you, that motion is agreed, motion number twenty-two, councillor Grady?
I'll second that motion.
Councillor Maguire? Councillor Grady? Now, will we move on?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, you're with us, yeah?
Yes, Cahill, look, thank you, this is an issue that several people, certainly over the last number of days, has contacted me, about the issue of litter, especially at the seafront in Strand Hill, now, I again have been unable to open the reply, so I would appreciate a reply, and I think it's very important that we continually keep an eye on and make sure that, you know, that it's not left in a poor state, the seafront, such a beautiful amenity, and to see the amount of garbage thrown at the bins there, so I'd like a report on it if I could, please.
Thank you, Mr Confeder.
Cahill, look, the bins at Strand Hill Promenade are currently emptied at least once a day, year round, and up to twice a day during peak season as resources allow, anything over and above this schedule is not achievable from a resource and a budget management perspective, thanks Cahill.
Thank you councillor Maguire.
Thank you, yeah, this is a particular problem in Strand Hill, and we're fortunate to have so many visitors, and those who come, obviously avail of the services that are there, but unfortunately, the bin space that we have isn't sufficient to meet that need, I'm aware that the businesses along the seafront during the summer do provide for additional emptying of the bins, but it appears that this is becoming more a year-round need now rather than just in the summer, it's a shame that there isn't more resources available to the council, but perhaps we will go back to the businesses and see whether or not they would consider increasing their allocation to deal with the problem throughout the year, thank you.
Thank you, that motion, councillor Gibbons?
It's just something that I've been observing in relation to the bins, and I know myself, like, don't take me wrong, if you get twice the amount of bins in Strand Hill, I don't think it's going to resolve the problem, I think myself that I seen a campaign that was started off at Ross's Point, and I think was more significant, and it carried a better impact, and where I do support the motion of councillor Grady, I'm just saying in relation, at Ross's Point, what they use, they use the slogan down there, for yeet's sake, bring your rubbish home with you, and it actually, a lot of people, it actually pointed in the right direction, it cut back on the rubbish in Ross's Point, a huge amount, and I was wondering if something of the same campaign could be maybe proposed for Strand Hill in relation to it, it's just an observation, and I have seen it, and I've actually seen people getting out of their cars and putting bags of rubbish in, it wasn't anything that was purchased at the beach, or stuff they brought to the beach with them, it was just clearing out the cars or whatever else, so it's just something that kind of we look at, we want to try and install in people as well, pride within these beauty spots that we have, pride within our county, pride of being Irish, that's the reality to it, it's just something that I would like to see kind of, maybe that we could look at it that way, now, I would support the motion, as I says, and I do support it, if the bins are monitored more regularly, but I do think that the way forward is try and educate the people, and I think a lot of that education needs to start as well within the schools, and that pride needs to be installed into our children in the schools, but I think if we go up, putting in more bins, whatever else for the likes of that, all we're doing is kind of encouraging more, make it up.
Thank you councillor Baker.
Yeah, sorry now, no, I'd just like to agree with Arthur Gibbons, we have a similar problem in my own village, and we took away the bins and we solved the problem, because people were coming and chucking, bringing their own stuff in and chucking it into it, so, and then the other thing is, if you have bins being collected in one area, we seem to be on the hind-tit out in our own area, no matter what's going on, so, I think it's a, you have to have an equal basis as well, so.
Thanks councillor Baker, councillor Grady, did you want to just come in again on that?
Yes, just briefly, it was really, the monitoring of the bins was the issue, I do agree that the more bins you have, it encourages people to leave their litter, and I think councillor Gibbons has given, proposed a very good idea, which is working very well out of Ross's Point, that maybe a similar campaign should be adopted at Strand Hill for yeet's sake, take it home, so I would hope that that could be followed up on, but I think it's important that the bins, I have photographs of the bins early in the morning, and they're in an awful state with stuff pouring out onto the footpath, so I do think to monitor them and monitor them early in the morning.
Thanks councillor Grady, and just a brief word myself, and this motion that I brought in, and I don't, maybe if the council could follow up on it, that some councils, I know certainly in Dublin, they have brought in the solar-powered self-compacting bins, that, you know, if bins are to be replaced, certainly I think if they could look at primarily in maybe the beauty spots where you have excess of, like, we're all aware in all our communities that there's an excess of illegal dumping and that, but if maybe were new bins are to be installed, or bins that are outdated and that are to be replaced, I know certainly I've written a motion some years ago, that there has been a success in communities where solar-powered bins are compacting rubbish, and bins are holding maybe ten times the amount of rubbish, and there is, from what I'm aware of, there's an app on them that signals when a bin is full, so maybe that could be looked at as well, but there's full agreement on that, thanks, members, moving on, so to motion number twenty-three, councillor Boyle, can I have a seconder?
Thank you Chair.
Councillor Bray?
We are told every home wins and jobs and cheaper goods will follow, in reality, it's a deal for multinational corporations and big businesses, this is bad for the environment and climate, it gives corporations the right to sue government if they make any policy that might interfere with their business plans or projected future profits, so if we wanted to take back the waste collection back into public ownership, or if we wanted to set up a state company to plan future renewable energy projects, we could be sued and taken to a special investors court, if we wanted to improve environmental regulation or ban frack gas or other fossil fuels being imported into the country, we could be sued, Canada is a huge producer of some of the dirtiest fossil fuels known, such as the Alberta tar sands, this deal could make it impossible for us to regulate use of products from these industries, CETA means the country can privatise an industry and service, but cannot reverse that policy in the future without being at the risk of big corporations, big businesses such as courts have already sued states trying to protect their water services or trying to ban fracking, cigarette companies have sued New Zealand over restrictions, while advertising from oil companies have sued Ecuador, this is bad for sustainable farming and agriculture, the allowance of over fifty thousand tonnes of Canadian beef or seventy-five thousand tonnes of pork imports will increase the pressure already on small to medium-sized farms and sectors such as beef farmers, with the exit from Britain, from the EU, and given that Britain is already the fourth largest recipient in the world of Canadian exports, it makes more likely that exports from Canada will find a way into the Ireland world, increase pressure and the struggle in the small farmers, it's bad for workers' rights, we haven't the best rights here, with Ireland for workers, but pushing these corporations gives corporations more rights than the workers, so I would ask that this council supports this motion, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bray.
Cahill, I second the motion, the trade union movement in Ireland and the European Union has taken a stand against the Comprehensive Economic and Trade Agreement, the CETA, the Irish Congress of Trade Unions, which represents seven hundred thousand workers, points out that the CETA represents no less than an affront to democracy, to bestow special legal rights on corporations and to award them legal privilege over citizens, fortunately, the government was forced to postpone a controversial vote on the trade agreement before Christmas, it had hoped to have it ratified by the Dáil after a fifty-five minute debate on the fifteenth of December, the vote had already been postponed from October to give the Green Party leader Eamon Ryan time to convince his members to support the treaty, which he failed to do, a number of senior Green Party members continue to have concerns and they're attempting to force a special convention of the party to debate it, included in the trade agreement is an investor court system, this is a new court only accessible to foreign multinational corporations, it gives these corporations the right to sue national governments in Europe for compensation for the loss of expected future profits in response to government actions that impact on the company's activities, in the past, these type of courts in other jurisdictions have been used to target minimum wage increases, tobacco regulations, bans on fracking and public ownership policies, it would put in doubt the ability to bring in a ban on fossil fuels, plastic bottles, restrictions on waste disposal, emission limits, taxes on sugar, health warnings, or an increase in the legal drinking age, as any and all of these could affect future profits for corporations, there's no end to the possibilities for litigation, it would be an almost total transfer of power from governments to corporations to private courts, the European Union portrays these treaties as free trade agreements, and there are a lot more than that, they're the latest method of deregulation and privatisation, all to increase profits for transnational corporations, I would ask members to support councillor Boyle's motion.
Thank you, that motion is agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, motion number twenty-four, councillor Boyle again?
Yeah, thank you Chair.
Can I have a seconder?
One in ten women in Ireland are suffering from endometriosis and are waiting up to nine years to receive treatment for proper diagnosis and from this debilitating chronic condition, the Endometriosis Association of Ireland has quoted the waiting time for diagnosis as being up to nine years, longer than the seven and a half years as reported in the UK, endometriosis effects can cause debilitating pain, heavy periods, painful sex, painful bowel and bladder movements, fatigue and infertility, the UK is finally starting to address this horrific condition following an MP inquiry into the UK, the majority of people have shared stories from how their mental health has been affected, education, careers, and they have all been damaged by the condition, more than ten thousand people told part in the all-party political group inquiry, which found that fifty-eight percent of people visited GP more than ten times before diagnosis, fifty-three percent went to A and E with symptoms before diagnosis, the majority of people also told their MPs that their mental health, their education careers had been damaged by the condition, about ninety percent said they would have liked access to psychological support, but were never offered it, with thirty-five percent having reduced income into due to endometriosis, and a survey of over thirteen and a half thousand women have found that half of them are reported being addicted to painkillers and having suicidal thoughts, due to gender pain gap, women's symptoms are often belittled by doctors, despite numerous visits to any local GPs and specialists, pain is notoriously hard to describe in pinpoint, but for women the work is dubious, arduous, we have to learn to advocate for ourselves and one another, but we need doctors and health professionals to meet us in the middle, believe our testimonies and help us over the line with diagnosis and treatment, with no cure for this condition and limited treatment including hormone therapy and surgery, it's time to call on the government to establish a working group to address this long waiting time for diagnosis, treatment and condition of the major psychological damage it has and it can cause to women who can suffer from it, endometriosis care across Ireland needs urgent improvement with diagnosis times needing to be cut in half, we can't carry on like this, this one in ten means it could be your sister, your girlfriend or a friend suffer from this condition, thank you very much.
Thank you, that motion is agreed, okay, agreed, we'll move on to, sorry now, I had last train of myself there, motion number twenty-five, councillor Arthur Gibbons, can I have a seconder, councillor Bray, did you get the report?
I got the report, there's some things that I want to highlight that's in the report, I wanted to first thank Mr John Moore for the report, it's an excellent I wanted to first thanks Mr John Morden for the report. It's an excellent report. And it covers a huge amount. What there, deals with issues like the traffic wardens and I have to say, and they don't get enough praise out there are traffic wardens. And that's one thing that I do like, the fact that it's acknowledged in the report because the traffic wardens take no nonsense when it comes to parking in the simplest places. They do their job and I seen it on the last, or when I was on the Borough and I was chair of the Access Committee. We always invited a member of the, it was the traffic wardens along to the meetings to oversee it. And their dedication towards it is unbelievable and it's great to see that in it. And the phone numbers and the car parking, I'm glad that we still use that. That was brought in, again, under that Access Committee. And I'm not saying it was my idea or any of the ordinary members, as far as I remember, I think it was Brian O'Flynn or Michael Carthy that brought in. And I think it was an excellent and it has worked so well. Another area here that I want to go to is the disability access certificate. Now, this is where a lot of people with disabilities and organizations, they do have a lot of queries in relation to it. There's a number of recent buildings even within Sligo. The only way that you can get this disability access certificate is by applying part-time building regs. With yet we have buildings within Sligo that you can get a wheelchair into, but you can't close the door behind you. That's the reality to it. And that boils down to enforcement. And I think myself, this is where it falls short, that you have somebody there that's dealing with enforcement and they're dealing with it as part of a planning regulation on the buildings. The disability access officer, again, we have a disability access officer only part-time. This is an area that I really want to praise the people that's involved in the Disability Consultant Committee. And I think myself, over the last number of years, this organization has worked extremely well. The people that's on it has to be praised by, and I do know it's councillor Declan Bray has been the chair on the previous Disability Consultant Committee and on this one. And I was a member of that for a short time and the scene work that was done was absolutely fantastic. And it'd be very in remiss of me, not to mention John Morden's input into it. John Morden is a hundred and ten percent committed to disability access. And I do understand that, as I do know that all the staff in this building are, who will do everything they can in relation to disability issues. But I do know, I noticed on the end of the report, considering above, there would not be, there appear to be a full-time role for disability or for dedicated disability access enforcement officer at present. Now, the report covers a huge amount. I had an email from a friend of mine that's an advocacy in disabilities. Now, I'm not going to reveal the whole email to you because a lot of it's personal, but there's some of it that's here. She has in here was, for example, websites should comply with WCAG, Web Centre Accessibility Guidelines. The council and leader partnership are providing grant aid to websites that do not comply with the lowest level of these standards and actively exclude many users. Likewise, public communication forms, documents made available by the council must be accessible to all. Centre of Excellence, Universal Degrees and IHREC both have easy to apply guidelines, but none of these reports, et cetera, comply with these guidelines. I don't, now this is where she comes in and she's a hundred percent correct in this. And I do not blame the council. This is, this is national. I can't talk about universal, but I would say it's national and it's with all the councils and what she's talking about. I don't believe that one person will solve these issues within the council. There would be a need to prior, sorry, capitalising on the word prioritization of equality and impact accessibility that has that throughout the policies, management and departments of the council and support by a number of qualified accessibility personnel that can assist staff to implement access right on all projects, big and small. So what she's actually saying is that you need a number of people with expertise to take staff and train staff and advise staff. For example, why pay to format a document when it can be produced in an accessible format in the first place? Degrees in formology should not be required when submitting an application to the council. Simple English and Irish will do once the font size is there. Simplify the documentation that everybody's able to use it. There's different types of disabilities out there. There's learning disabilities. It's not just physical, but it is. But what she's actually saying here, that in relation to the documentation that we have, a lot of that documentation, it's very nearly legally written up and a lot of people, I know it myself because filling out even housing applications for people and everything else, a lot of the stuff is fairly difficult for people to go through. That's why they get a lot of councillors that sit down and go through the applications for them. And it's very difficult now because of COVID, councillors can't come in contact with their constituents as they would. Now, there was something else that I wanted to see, that I wanted to say as well in relation to it. And it's actually off the Personal Assistance Service campaign. And it makes sense when it boils down to it and everybody should abide by it. Nothing about us, without us. The reality to it, they're not a different race of people. They're not a different species of people. They're people with disabilities. Access, this type of access that we're looking for is for everybody. It's universal access. And there should be no thought really put into it. The only thought that should be there is that it's for everybody. And these documents are being drafted up and everything else, that's what should be taken on board. Not this idea of this is the format, this is the one we fall, we'll put somebody in place within housing to help you fill out that document or whatever. A lot of people won't come to somebody with that. They'll actually go without. What we do need, and we need to get into our own mindset, we're dealing with everybody out there on an equal basis. It's not just certain sectors deciding. There's a huge amount of people out there with disabilities. I'm one of them, people that's actually sitting there. I have a disability. My disability doesn't come against me as much as it does with other people. But there is different types of disabilities and I think that's what we need to take on board. And the motion that I put down was more to try and get us into the mindset of that way of thinking. I know myself that one dedicated disability enforcement officer isn't going to make much of an impact. It's like a drop in the ocean. But it would have been a start. And that's where I was coming from.
Thank you.
I'd ask you to support the motion.
Thanks councillor Gibbons, councillor Bray.
Cahill, I just wish to endorse everything that councillor Gibbons has said. And I also wish to join with him in complimenting acting director of service, John Morden for his work on this particular issue over the last number of years in particular. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you councillor Maguire.
Thank you. I sat on the Disability Access Committee with both Declan and Arthur. And I support everything that Arthur has so eloquently put. You know, people with disabilities really need our assistance and it is a mindset and one that requires us all just to broaden our minds and think of things from somebody else's perspective. I'd like to concur with the remarks in relation to Mr Morden, who did excellent work leading that committee for the last number of years. But one of the motions I got before this council was that we would increase funding for that committee because I believe without funding and be that for an enforcement officer or be that to do the works required, we're really toothless. So I will be raising that again at the budget time. Thank you.
Thanks, members. That's agreed. Moving on so to, I'm just informing the members now, it's twenty past. Moving on to next motion, motion number twenty-six, councillor Gibbons again, can I have a second there? Councillor Boyle.
Cahill, this is something that I raised a number of times on the SPC and I raised it kind of, I've actually done a bit even in relation to the ready one, relation to it. It's, I'm not supporting the HAP scheme by putting this motion down. I personally think it was a disaster from day one. I've always felt myself that the only way forward in relation to any sort of housing is public lands, public money, public housing. That's exactly what it should be. But what we have here, we have a disastrous situation that's blown out of all control. We have half payments, people receiving half payments out there. I think the limit that they can get is five seventy-five per week. Yet if anybody wants to visit daft dot com and look at the price of property in Sligo, there is nothing out there under eight hundred and fifty euro. That means that a family has to come along. If it's a single mum with one or two children, whatever else, she has to come along and she has to, she gets her half payment. She pays her council rent of about thirty-two euros per week. Then she pays over to landlord once a month, three, three hundred and fifty, some cases four, could be more. And what nobody seems to realize in relation to this, and especially central government, that these sacrifices that that mother has to make has to come off the back of her children. Anybody that's in receipt of lone parents or job seekers or whatever is just getting the payment that keeps them over the breadline. And yet we have a situation here that the best that could be offered to people is the half payment, which isn't adequate enough to fund what's there. And we're putting people into desperate hardship. We're putting them into situations that they probably never return from. Their children is seeing that hardship and that's probably all that they'll probably ever expect themselves in life. It's going the wrong direction. And what I am calling for is for the government to bring the price of the HAP up to meet the price of the property. Now, this HAP is being abused out there and it's being abused in the big time by the landlords, and I can tell you that. And they have it at the moment and they have it in relation to this COVID and they're able to hide under it. I've been informed that there's a lot of our tenants in receipt of a half payment is living in properties that hasn't been inspected yet since before the COVID epidemic came in. I'm dealing with one or two of these cases where these properties are substandard. In one case, the lady hasn't even got a carbon monoxide alarm within the house. And yet that landlord is getting nine hundred euros a month for that property. And she has to, this woman had a very difficult Christmas with her two children because she is part-time worker, she gets a half payment of in around four hundred and fifty. So where does the balance of that four hundred, that nine hundred come from? It comes out of her pocket and then she has to pay her council rent on top of that. We have also a situation, and this, I think myself, it needs to be addressed. And I wasn't going to bring it up here, but I think we need to bring it up here because the public needs to know about it. On the twenty-third of December, a man, a young man that had his rent paid up to date, wasn't even in arrears with it. Because he put too many demands on his landlord to have repairs carried out in the house. The landlord dragged him out of his house on the twenty-third of December, put him in the van and all his belongings, arrived over here into the council and dumped everything off on the step and came in through housing and turned around and says, you can have him, he's not staying in my property anymore. And turned and walked away. On the twenty-third of December. And that lad had to end up spending his Christmas in a homeless shelter. And a question I would like to ask, and I don't know if this is the right format, I might leave it until after this. What grounds has that lad got? Or sorry, what protection has he got under the local authority or the HAP scheme that he's part of? Is it him that's going to have to take legal action against the landlord? Or is it HAP? Now, this lad wouldn't, he'd have a disability, a learning disability. He hasn't got a light to sound, he's a very proud lad. The Scrooge on the day of Christmas would throw him out the road. He didn't owe one penny, but because he put rent. And that same property wasn't even inspected before he went into it. And I see this whole thing at HAP as a disaster. But what I am calling for, the main body of this motion, what I am calling for is that the government meet the required funding for these rents. It is very unfair that the government set a certain figure for single mums with children, her child, and it's just above their breadline and then turn their back and walk away. And expect them to give it to Fat Cat and Lawrence then to pay what they got for their children, children's allowance and whatever else to pay to keep a roof over their heads, substandard condition.
Thanks councillor Gibbons, councillor Boyle.
Thank you, Chair. Supporting the motion, I fully agree with councillor Gibbons and what he's saying. I'm sure every one of us here are dealing with people who are on HAP, they can't afford to pay it. They go for the extra twenty percent, they're not entitled to it. So I definitely believe that the payment should be increased. But also the landlords still aren't being held accountable for their actions of refusing people HAP. If their rent was lower, if they didn't, a lot of the people that are taking, or that aren't taking HAP, aren't registered landlords. You know, and this is the issue. So they're getting away with getting cash off people rather than taking HAP. And that's building up the housing list that we have and it's only going to get bigger. The next year or two is going to be so important. And as councillor Gibbons said, we need to be building public houses on public land with public money. But I don't think there's going to be any change in the next couple of years. We don't seem to want to care about the most vulnerable in society. A hundred years ago, we had the issue between the mother and baby homes and et cetera, up until the eighties. What has changed between the eighties and now with vulnerable women, single mothers, single parents? There's nothing changing. It's the exact same things that's happening. And we're against standing by while this happens. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Clerk.
Chairman, while I'm not going to oppose the motion, I have certainly some difficulty with it because this money goes straight to landlords. And what it'll do is with an increase, it'll give an opportunity for the landlords to put up the rent again. But I'm dealing with an individual that's on thirty-two thousand a year with a disability, his wife is disabled and one of his kids is disabled. And he's renting a house and he's getting no support whatsoever. And I definitely think that public money should be used to build houses. There's billions going into this scheme. And I'm concerned that giving another increase in this amount of money will only give an excuse for the landlords to put up their property more. And as I begin, the squeeze middle is the people that's losing more than anything in this.
Thanks, members, on that. And that motion is agreed. We'll move on so to motion number twenty-seven. Councillor Gibbons again, can I have a second there? And just, I'm trying to keep people in mind, councillor Bray, it's half eleven.
Considering the fact that the people of Ireland build out the banks, despite me all Martin's hazziness on the matter, and because of the unbelievable lack of solidarity currently being shown by all the banks, I call on Sligo County Council to write to all the lenders within the state to request a real payment break to be given to mortgage holders and small to medium enterprises, giving them a realistic achievable chance to survive in the current employment and business environment. When this pandemic began, European Banking Authority, EBA, issued guidelines that allowed governments and lenders to provide for payment breaks for borrowers who are impacted by the virus. Due to our government's inactions, Irish borrowers were only able to avail of six months payment break. While borrowers in Germany, Italy and Spain were able to avail of breaks between nine and twelve months. And if things were not bad enough, the banks here charged borrowers additional interest during their payment breaks. At the end of November, thousands of mortgage holders and small to medium businesses at the end of their payment breaks found it virtually impossible to return to normal repayments. It is a known fact that the banks and the lenders have failed to offer many of these borrowers sustainable solutions in these difficult times. So many businesses are under threat. The hospitality sector, restaurants, hairdressers, beauty salons and the non-essential sector. Just to name a few. All had their doors closed throughout most of this pandemic. And of course, not forgetting the ordinary worker who's with mortgages and young families depending on a COVID payment as their only form of income. I am now calling on the banks and the lenders to do the right thing to secure payment break extension without additional interest to those borrowers who need it.
Thank you councillor Bray. Second motion, that's agreed. Motion number fourteen was taken with number twenty-eight. So motion number twenty-nine, councillor Maguire, can I have a second there?
Second it.
Councillor Bray.
I couldn't open the report either. I wonder, could I?
Cahill, while the footpath linking the village with the rugby club would be desirable, this would be a very significant body of work, both in terms of design and construction. From a design perspective, the overall length of footpath required to link the village with the rugby club is nine hundred and eighty metres. The construction of a footpath along the Burma Road would be reasonably straightforward, subject to funding. However, the circa five hundred and twenty metre section from the mini roundabout to the rugby club would prove quite challenging from a construction perspective, given that all existing house entrances, of which there are many, are at grade with the existing road surface. Accommodation works and drainage works would be extensive. Careful consideration would have to be given to combining the existing cycle lane with any proposed footpath also. This in turn may give rise to the need for land acquisition at pinch points along the route. In terms of costs, when one factors in footpath construction costs, drainage works, accommodation works, the raising of ironworks, alterations to public lighting, line markings, a scheme of this scale. the raising of ironworks, alterations to public lighting, line markings, a scheme of this scale will cost well in excess of four hundred thousand euro. While not perfect, pedestrians currently have the advantage of wide hard shoulders on both sides of the R two nine two. The area benefits from public lighting and falls within the fifty kilometre per hour speed limit. Such an improvement scheme for pedestrians could be considered for funding under the NTA's active travel scheme. Thank you, Caherlock.
Thank you, Mr Kilfeather, for that report. I would urge the council to apply under the NTA funding scheme to look for that funds. I know it is not an inconsiderable amount, but this is an incredibly busy route. There is a new planning development which has gone ahead, which will allow for another twenty houses to be built in this direct area, which is obviously going to increase the footfall. That piece of ground links to the largest estate in Strand Hill, in Dorian Strand, and it would facilitate schoolchildren particularly for safe access all the way to school if that was available. Particularly at the minute, you will see huge amount of people, both locally, well, obviously, once the restrictions are lifted and those who come to visit who use this route ways. It's a loop with the Claspa Bron loop from the village right the way to Dorian Strand and back up again. And while, as Mr Kilfeather has pointed out, there is a hard shoulder on both sides and there is a cycle lane, it is still, you will frequently see pedestrians stepping out into the roadway because they're meeting others coming in the opposite direction. So again, I know this is a matter which has come up numerous times throughout my term of the council and that other councillors have sought this footpath in the past. And I'm just renewing that application, if an application could be made to the NTA for the funding. Thank you.
Caherlock, in seconding the motion, I would endorse what Constable Maguire has said. This has come up every six months, I'm sure, over the last number of years. And I think, and I'd like to thank the Director of Service for their response, disappointing as it is. But I think from the point of view of the councillors from this Sligo Strand Hill area, we are anxious to see this work carried out. And it's just, it's a timely reminder to the executive that this will continue to be raised at meetings until such time as funding is provided. And hopefully the NTA will look sympathetically on a proposal in the current year and indeed the new year. Thank you, Caherlock.
Members, that's agreed. Now, motion number thirty, Constable Maguire, that's, I'm going to take motion number thirty-two as well, that's a similar motion. So Constable Maguire.
Yeah, this is in fact supposed to be a joint motion and I'm happy for Constable Gilroy to take the lead on it if he so wishes.
Thanks very much, thanks, Sinead, for that. This has gone on, I think a lot of people think this only blew up when a question was asked in the DOL there the week before Christmas. Constable Maguire, Constable Walsh, Constable Baker and myself sit on the board. Sligo County Council is a fifty percent owner of this particular facility. And to have it described, I suppose, in the DOL as a private company took us all aback. And that's not a, that's not a political statement. We changed it slightly from the first draft that was sent to Constable, that was sent to Constable Maguire. Constable Walsh asked that we change it around and put the emphasis on the first part on requesting the Taoiseach, the Minister and the Minister of State to provide the funds for the next five years, to provide a five-year strategy. It has been taken up by all of our public representatives at national level. They've written to the Taoiseach, written to others. But I think that the bottom line on this is that the coffers are empty. There's no money left. Everything that has been, that was there for us, has now been put into the pot and there is literally nothing left. Jim Gavin and the team from the Irish Aviation Authority, that's the same Jim Gavin that used to manage the Dublin team. He, he's basically insisted on certain emergency safety measures being taken to bring the airport up to standard. We're not classified as a regional airport anymore because there's no regional flights into us. Waterford is, and there are no regional flights into Waterford. So again, we're looking to get a working group set up. And I'd like to thank John Riley, I know he's been negotiating between Joe Corcoran and the North West Regional Authority to try and see what could be done as a good way. And I think we need to be an active member of that as a council and that we all need to get behind it. Constable Bree and myself brought a joint motion to the North West Regional Assembly meeting in December. And we got backing from every single county in the region, from Donegal down to Galway and even into Cavan and Monaghan. So it's vital for the entire area. The centre point for the area covered by the helicopter is actually in a field just outside Grange. So Strand Hill is about fifteen miles by, as the crow flies or as the helicopter flies from that point. So Strand Hill is absolutely perfectly, if this ended up moving to Donlow or Toynock, we would be in serious trouble. So really, this is a vital piece of infrastructure for the county and I ask you all to support it. Thank you.
Thanks, Constable Gilroy. Just to remind, and I know some of the members online want to comment on this as well, that we are eleven forty. So if you can keep it brief, please. Constable Walsh.
Thanks, Caherlock. Thanks, Caherlock, and I want to support everything that Constable Gilroy has said. And likewise, the other two directors, Constable Maguire and Constable Baker. This has been a situation that's ongoing for some time, even though it has just become to light in the media in recent weeks. I think the airport has been ignored for long enough. It hasn't received one euro since two thousand and eleven. And I think it's imperative that funding is made available through the coastguard to carry out work on the runway that's, as Constable Gilroy has pointed out, has been required by the Irish Aviation Authority, both in terms of lighting on the runway and in-flight instrument procedures. The facilities operated since two thousand and eleven without one euro support from the state at any level. And the figures were released from the coastguard rescue one-one-eight in late December. I think it was the last week actually in December, they've released a video actually on their Facebook page. And as Constable Gilroy has said, the coastguard in Sligo now is the busiest of the four bases in the county. It's ahead of Shannon, Dublin and Waterford. So it's, out of the four bases in the country, Sligo is now the busiest coastguard station. And to give people, I suppose, in short, there's two hundred and twenty-seven search and rescue missions carried out in two thousand and twenty from Sligo. Forty-eight island medevacs, sixty-three people rescued, three hundred and fifty mission hours, eighty-six persons assisted and twenty-five intra-hospital transfers. And I suppose, as the Irish Aviation Authority has set out this in October, looking for these works to be done, to be carried out by the end of January. And I understand the works are well underway at Sligo Airport. And in terms of the monetary capital that's required to enter Sligo Airport and the coastguard, the airport itself has two hundred thousand available to push towards the five hundred thousand. So it's three hundred thousand is required from the state in terms of capital and a hundred thousand in terms of running costs for the next three to five years, which will allow Sligo Airport to stand on its own as a business entity and a sustainable business model to implement a five-year strategy that Constable Gilroy has alluded to. So I think it's imperative that the minister, we had a conference call with a number of officials two weeks ago or the week before Christmas, from the coastguard and the department. And I suppose their outline is that only funding can be made available through the coastguard. But it still leaves that vacuum of funding for running costs, ongoing running costs. The current coastguard contract is up to two thousand and twenty-three. So Sligo will be bidding for a new contract post-two thousand and twenty-three. And it's imperative this services let go from Sligo. We've seen enough services at national level being removed from Sligo, such as the new Bill Sligo Guards Association. And it's up to our four Tachtadaola and our senators and everyone in political power to ensure that this coastguard remains at Sligo and that this base remains operable into the future. And I, one final point, this airport wouldn't be here only for the prudent management of the current airport executive and the airport manager. To have two hundred thousand in an account to match fund for these works and to not have one euro investment from the state since it's lost its support back in two thousand and eleven and still be operating at full safety procedures in place, the UPTA ASO standards, which is the European airport standards. So the airport is well capable of standing on its own with this coastguard contract. And everything should be done to ensure that the capital works are funded and also that there's a hundred thousand in running costs. And in terms of the board of directors, this isn't an issue that's going to be going away or swept under the carpet. You know, we're going to ensure that this is a sustainable model. And Sligo County Council, as Constable Gilroy has pointed out, are a shareholder of fifty percent of this. And they need to be doing more to support the coastguard. I understand that there's a position on the executive that should be filled through the board of directors at Sligo Airport. It's important that's done, that a member of the executive is put onto the board of directors in Sligo Airport as soon as is possible. So I leave it at Caherlock, thank you very much.
Constable Walsh, Constable Castleley, just conscious of time now, we have another few bits to get through.
Yeah, I'm just going to be very brief. Marion Harkin actually raised this a couple of weeks ago with various ministers. And she actually has received positive response from Leo Varadkar that funding will be made available. So I suppose that's good news to hear. And I'm hoping that that official announcement will be made in the next couple of weeks. And I'd just like to commend the board of management and the staff and everybody involved in keeping this vital service going. I won't go back on what I said, we cannot afford to lose this service in the North West. So hopefully, we'll have positive news very soon on that funding. And I'd like to just commend Marion Harkin on, I suppose, running with this as well and personally seeking a meeting with Leo Varadkar and getting a commitment that funding will be made available. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Maguire.
Thank you, I won't repeat what my colleagues have said, just to echo it. But also to state, and I suppose to put you on notice and ask for your future assistance, should that funding not come to fruition, that we will be calling on all of our colleagues across every party to apply their political pressure to ensure that the airport is supported. Thank you.
Move on, so to motion number thirty-one. Constable Castleley, second.
Okay, to welcome the report, I've read it. The new walk at Rockleigh is a huge success, it's a fantastic amenity. People park at the causeway as you go out onto Rockleigh. And unfortunately, there's been a few occasions where people have obstructed the road. So if some sort of, when we're doing wonderful facilities like these for our own people and for visiting tourists, it's important that we don't cause anything that would obstruct safety vehicles or farmers or fishermen trying to access the harbour or the farmland. So thank you very much for the report.
Thank you, that motion is agreed. Agreed, move on, so to motion number thirty-three.
I'll defer that one.
Deferred, thanks. So move on to votes of sympathy, votes of sympathy taken up. And I have votes of congratulations. The first vote of congratulations I have here is to congratulate be extended to Gráinne Kilfeather from Grange County, Sligo. Gráinne is the daughter of our acting CEO and congratulate Gráinne on winning one of four Domino's Local Legends Award for her dedicated work as a nurse at Letter Kenny University Hospital and one of over four and a half thousand nominees. So that's an extremely well-deserved congratulations there to Gráinne. And I know on behalf of all the members here, we concur with that. The second one is to vote congratulations be extended to Caroline Card, Mount Edward, Ballinfull County, Sligo, on success as a sports psychologist with the All-Ireland hurling championship-winning team of two thousand and twenty. So if they're agreed, conferences agreed and proposed. Proposed, Constable Taylor, seconded, Constable Sinead Maguire. Number thirty-seven to note, that's noted, correspondence we all have. Matters from the minutes, no matters. And on item number forty, any other business, just one issue on this that I want to raise and I have another person wants to mention something as well. I have been contacted in my role as Caherlock by some members that are just concerned, I suppose, with the current pandemic and I suppose the figure's been so high that our full meetings in the chamber needed where we have the fourteen members. So I think it is something we will discuss at the next procedures meeting that's coming up this week. So I think it's just something to make people aware that people that have contacted me, we will raise it at that. Because I believe some councils are doing full zone meetings. So again, that's something we'll bring up. Constable Baker has indicated.
What I want to bring up is, put a motion on what I was talking about first, but it's our outdoor staff that have concerns, they have no problem coming out doing emergency work. But I think in other councils, they're not being called out. So I don't know if you have anything on it, Tom, or is there? But I know there's definitely concerns.
We're obviously just dealing with what we get down from, you know, there's no right decision or wrong decision. At the end of the day, we're frontline services, same as the nurses, same as the doctors, same as the people in the pharmacies, same as the people in the shops. We have, we have certain works that we have to do. I know there's a meeting this afternoon, of course, there's concerns, we understand that completely on a personal level. But, you know, it's just getting the balance right. So, you know, I think that'll get sorted this afternoon. Thanks, Caherlock.
Can I just come in, on Friday, we discussed the, and I see there's a letter out this morning to us about the, or a memo about the roads works that are being suspended and that, the one that's been kept going. I did raise a concern on Friday and as I was driving past it this morning, I saw a group of, two groups of two, a group of five and a group of four with no masks and not socially distancing on the site of the N four and fifteen. It's going to come back on us. So we need to, we need to tell the contractor that everyone on site has to be obeying the rules because, and we have to, it takes some sort of inspections on it to make sure it's been fully complied with because they're coming from outside the area and there is a concern by people that they will bring more of the COVID into the area. Thank you.
Caherlock, I absolutely agree one hundred percent with what you're saying, councillor. We've had this conversation ourselves on Friday. It was, it was being brought to the contractor's attention that the absolute importance of complying with every regulation. We've made a decision that this is critical infrastructure. Whether that's a right decision or a wrong decision, we've made the decision. But you're absolutely right. Everything has to be done absolutely in compliance with the regulations. And I'm disappointed to hear that that's your observation already. We will follow that up again immediately.
Thank you. Already, yes. Yeah.
Under AOB, I suppose it would be important not to forget that the Western Distributor Road is being opened today at four o'clock. And this is a huge positive for this area because it'll, there'll be quality access and it will relieve traffic congestion in the area. So I want to acknowledge all the work done by our CEO, by Tom Brennan, Brian Finn, Paurick Martin and Michael, the engineers who were on site there. And I know the work was a bit behind, but we have went through a pandemic and it's wonderful for this area today at four o'clock that, again, we have something positive. It has added to the whole ambience and the look of the area. So I want to congratulate all, I think it's important that we highlight the positives that our council do as well. Thank you, Caherlock.
Thank you, Constable Boy.
Thank you, Chair. It's just for the housing maintenance staff and people that have to roll over to Christmas Eve to give them serious thanks because it's been a tough year anyway. But the fact I know some of them are going out Christmas Eve and even further into it, whether it was on the roads or whatever, just to give them our thanks. Thank you.
Constable Castleley. Can you put on your mic, please, Constable Castleley?
I'd like to congratulate the roads team on the opening of the Western Distributor Road as well. And full credit to everybody, even despite the pandemic, that they did get it finished. Not too far off the designated time. So well done to everybody and it really will make such a huge difference. It's a game changer for Sligo. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Clerk.
I want especially to congratulate Tom Kilfeather on this project because I remember being at a meeting with Tom and Marion Harkin and Constable Castleley. And the presentation that he gave to Minister Ross at the time was exceptional. And the fact that the IDA was putting in so much money to this and that Tom was there and led out on this project. And we're very lucky to have a man of the stature of Tom Kilfeather on our team and all his staff. And we're very lucky to have a man of the stature of Tom Kilfeather on our team and all his staff. And it shouldn't be unnoticed that, that he, he's an incredible man and we're very lucky to have him. And we hope that he's met permanent as our CE. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Councilor Maguire.
Sorry, I'd just also like to be associated with those remarks. As I was passing this morning, the outdoor staff were down, taking down the barriers and it was just wonderful to see it happening at last. It is going to be a big addition to that side of town. It has been a fantastic project. As Michael has outlined, we were brought through every stage along it with really brilliant presentations, which was fantastic. And we could feed that back to people who were asking us when it was going to happen. So just to join with the comments of my colleagues and congratulating Brian, Tom and all the staff who worked so hard on it to bring it to fruition, particularly during a pandemic.
And yeah, I concur and it's clear, like I want to just concur with everything that's been said. It's good news for Sligo and it's great that we have excellent directors of services here and excellent staff that were able to move this project on, which is great. And I know that it's, it's a good news story for Sligo today. So congratulations to Tom and you might convey that to all the roads staff and all the people that are involved in that. Because certainly, you know, we, we need all the good news in this climate that we can get. I want to thank all the members for the cooperation that we've concluded the meeting and the time and keep everybody safe. And we'll see you next month. Thank you.